Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's ordinary council meeting, which is also our first meeting of 2019. Welcome back from the break. I'm the Mayor, councillor, Lucy Ndecongreve, and I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency this evening, please follow the direction of council officers and the emergency procedures on the wall near the door. In a first for us tonight, tonight marks the commencement of council streaming its council meetings to the wider community. The council meeting will be available as video on demand on council's YouTube channel in the coming days. I'd also like to note that I've given approval for the journalist from the Star Weekly and for Channel 31 to audio and video record the meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify the journalist from the Star Weekly or a council officer if you have any concerns. So item number one is the acknowledgement of country, so can I please ask everybody to stand? On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land, the Warangiri people, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated and councillors, please remain standing. Councillors, I'll read the council commitment. As the council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Please be seated. So item number three on the agenda is apologies and leave of absence. We have one apology this evening is for councillor Lankiship. Item number four on the agenda is... Oh! Sorry, it was a motion for a leave of absence for councillor Lankiship and councillor Juditshire. So you just need a mover of the motion. Sorry?
Sorry.
Um, so I understand that we have a motion this evening for a leave of absence, apologies for that. So it is printed in your business papers councillor, is there a mover of the motion? Councillor Papafodeon, could you please move the motion?
As in the papers.
Thank you councillor Papafodeo, is there a second for the motion? Councillor Allen? All those in favour? Thanks. Oh! Thank you, um... Motion carried, gosh. Oh, it's been too long! Okay, um, so item number four, disclosures of conflict of interest. Councillors, are there any conflict of interest this evening? Can... sorry?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will be declaring an indirect interest at 12.10.
Thank you councillor Juditshire, councillor Fam?
I would like to declare indirect conflict of interest at 12.3.
Great, thank you councillor Fam. Um, item number five on the agenda is designation of items as confidential. There are five items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate the items as confidential?
I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor, as printed in the business papers.
Thank you councillor Juditshire, do we have a second for that motion? Councillor Borg? And, uh, do we have, uh... Sorry, that's a procedural motion, so I'll ask for the vote. All those in favour? Designating those items con... Carried. Item number six on the agenda is confirmation of minutes of previous council meetings. May I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meetings? Councillor David? Councillor David, would you please move the motion?
Second, Madam Mayor, the council confirms the minutes during a council meeting on the 4/4/9, held on 2nd of November, December 9, 2018.
Thank you councillor David, do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Trung? I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, item number 6A is the statutory tabling of a report determined... The determination of the councillor conduct panel. Councillors, on the 13th of February, a councillor conduct panel provided a copy of its decision to council. Section 81m of the Local Government Act 1989 requires... Requires that council tables a copy of the panel's decision at its next ordinary meeting of council and records it in the minutes of that meeting. There is no motion or debate required in relation to this item. To this end, a copy of the panel's decision dated the 13th of February 2019 and made pursuant to section 81j 1e of the Local Government Act of 1989, A is tabled for the purpose of section 81m of the Local Government Act 1989, and B will be recorded in the minutes of this ordinary meeting of council by the chief executive officer pursuant to clause 79 of the Brimbank City Council Governance Meeting Procedure Local Law Number 1. So council, there'll be no formal debate on this issue, but as the leader of the council, I think it thought it pertinent for me to make a couple of statements. So I won't be making any further comments about the report as it does not relate to the business of the council and I've already released and clarified council's position in a statement that was issued last Thursday. I am however much more interested in reassuring the community that the provision of council services has not been impacted in any way by any of these matters. Council officers across Brimbank and in this building have continued to carry out the vital day-to-day work to ensure that this great and diverse city of ours has the highest possible standard of service, staying absolutely true in everything we do to our community-first approach. I also want to take this opportunity to commend my fellow councillors on the way that you continue to focus on what after all is the reason we're all here, and that is representing the people of Brimbank. I've been impressed and heartened by the fact that you've simply gotten on with the job. One of my most important priorities as the mayor is to ensure that this cohesive united approach continues and that we remain focused on the tasks at hand. We still have a lot to get done as a council, I think we all know that. Now more than ever, it is important that we can continue to get on with the job of good governance, good policy and good outcomes for the people of Brimbank. Thank you all, and I'd now like to continue the business of council tonight. So we're moving straight on to item number seven, which is condolences. We have two condolences this evening. Uh, number 7.1 is the passing of Mr Roger Isherwood. I think it would be appropriate for council to note the passing of Mr Roger Isherwood, and may I have a mover of the motion of condolence for Mr Roger Isherwood?
Motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor David? As printed? Moving the motion as printed?
Yes.
And do I have a second for the motion? Thank you councillor Juditshire, does a mover wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I will, yes. It was with regret to hear the passing of Roger Friend on the 16th of January, first of the month this year. Roger was, I met him as a councillor, a mayor of the former city of Kilo, and of course later on in 1997 became a councillor for the city of Munivali. I got to know Roger a lot better. The last 20 years as he was a justice of peace and a bail justice thereafter. He continued with a great heart within the community at all times and my association with him at the Western Regional Ordinary Justices, sitting down to put the roster together to the Western Region Police Stations with the justices to serve the community indeed. He was a tireless type of person and his last couple of weeks before he passed away, he was still had the humour with him. I also known, of course, Roger and his family, Myra. He's left his wife behind, Myra, with the... with the two daughters. One of the daughters, I couldn't help listening to her at the funeral, a service where she stood up and said that my father wouldn't know how to say no to a community or an ordinary person, that... that was 100% true. So I know, Madam Mayor, that a letter already been sent to the family for passing our condolences through here, but I want to say that Roger lived a life with serving the community and he was one of those people that was well loved by the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor David, does a second wish to speak to the motion? No? Okay, I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're on to item 7.2, which is another condolence motion for the passing of Mr Andrew McGaughan. I think it appropriate, would be appropriate for us to note the passing of Mr Andrew McGaughan. May I please have a mover of a motion of condolences from Andrew?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that motion.
Thank you councillor Tarkos? Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Hedditch? Does a mover wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the Brimbank Council, I would like to offer our sincerest condolences on the passing of Andrew McGaughan on Friday, the 1st of February 2019, to his partner Lesley Greve and his family. Andrew was a Sunshine resident and an award-winning novelist. He was highly recognised author with acknowledgements including winning the Miles Franklin and Vogue Awards. From a personal perspective, I'd like to also say that Praise, which was one of his award-winning books, was a very frank and darkly humorous novel about being young in Australia in the 1990s. I remember reading it and thinking how raw and peaceably truthful it was and essentially a voice from the lost generations of Australia. Vale, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos, does a second wish to speak? No? Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, item number eight on the agenda is congrat... congratulations. There are no items of congratulations on the agenda for this evening, so we'll go straight on to item number nine, which is public question time. Miss Flea, I understand we have received some questions from the public this evening?
Yes, chair. Uh, the first two questions are from Kay Sheridan, and I'll read them together as they're related. Given that the Supreme Court has now ruled in favour of Glenora in respect to the dispute arose in the southern section of the Solomon Heights estate, will council now cooperate fully with Glenora and local landowners in ensuring the rapid development of the entire estate, particularly given that Glenora has offered to extend its road building programme into the northern section of Solomon Heights at no cost to council and that Glenora has access to environmental offsets that would allow this entire estate to be developed holistically? With respect to the recent... The second question is with respect to the recent legal action that Glen... Council took against Glenora in regard to the ownership of roads in the Solomon Heights estate, what is the total cost of the legal fees incurred by council and what benefit accrued to ratepayers from this legal action?
Thank you, Miss Flea. So in response to the first question there by Mr Sheridan, council's role in the potential development of Solomon Heights is as a planning authority and responsible authority. On this basis, council's role is to assess land use and development applications and/or planning applications lodged by the landowners. Matters of national environmental significance, including environmental offsets, must be resolved with the Commonwealth Government and are outside of council's jurisdiction. In relation to the second question, council did not take action against Glenora, who was the plaintiff in this matter. The matter of costs is still before the court and has not been resolved. The benefit of the legal case is that the landowners now have greater clarity about road ownership in the southern section of the precinct, which will assist in future planning and development that the landowners may wish to pursue. Thank you.
Uh, the next two questions are also from a Kay Sheridan, who is a different person. Um, in its final draft industrial land strategy 2018 to 2030 report, council has indicated that it has commissioned further strategic work to inform its considerations about future land use within Solomon Heights. What entity will be undertaking this strategy development work? And what terms of reference have been provided to that entity in relation to the strategy development work? And what timeframes applies to the completion of the strategy development work?
Okay, the answer to that question is that council has commissioned consultancy firm Plant A Place to prepare a land use options report for the Solomon Heights estate. It is intended that the report be presented to an ordinary meeting of council in the first half of 2019, so it's coming through shortly.
Uh, the second question from Kay Sheridan is, in its final draft industrial land strategy 2018 to 2020... 30, sorry, report, council has indicated that it has commissioned further strategic work to inform its consideration about future land use within Solomon Heights. What new information is council expecting to learn from the strategic work that is not already known based on the numerous reports, investigations, analysis and strategy development activities that have been undertaken over the last 20 years?
Thanks, Miss Flea. Uh, the land use options report will consider a range of strategic matters that impact on the potential future development of Solomon Heights and potentially inform a future decision about either retaining current land use zones or changing the land use zones or overlays that apply to the land. Potential new issues that have emerged since the previous studies include the release of the draft Melbourne Airport Melbourne Plan of 2018, which revealed plans to extend the existing Australian Noise Exposure Forecast, ANEF, and the noise contours over Solomon Heights, as well as industry separation distances that potentially apply to a precinct from existing industry, infrastructure and the rail corridor. It is intended that the report be presented to an ordinary council meeting in the first half of 2019, so another one for you to look forward coming through in the next few months.
The next question is from G Collins, why the toilets at Willahan Park shut?
Thanks for your question, Mr Collins. Um, in line with the recommendations in council's Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan 2016 and council's Public Toilet Strategy 2018, the toilets at Kevin Willahan Gardens are earmarked for removal due to poor condition, inappropriate design and availability of a new public toilet facility at Sunvale Community Park. The toilets at Kevin Willahan Gardens will be demolished in the coming months.
The next two questions are from C McDonald, and I'll read them together as they're related. Does Brimbank City Council have a significant tree register? If not, can council explain what happened to the previous register that members of the community commented on? And the second question is can council advise when the significant tree register would be updated and how members of the public can contribute?
Thanks Mel, and thanks, Miss McDonald, for your questions this evening. So in response to your first question, council does have a significant tree register for significant trees on council land. About 1,000 trees are listed and they are managed through proactive inspections aimed at ensuring these trees are healthy, safe and contribute to the urban forests of this municipality. At this stage, there is no significant tree register for trees on private land, but council officers are developing a new municipal tree policy in 2019-20 that will include the consideration of development of a significant tree register for trees on private land. In relation to your second question, the significant tree register for trees on council land is updated regularly by council officers and the community can contribute to this if they have any suggestions. As detailed previously, council officers have commenced the process to develop a new municipal tree policy that will include consideration of development of a significant tree register for trees on private land. A draft of this document will be available for community input and feedback in 2019, 2020. Thank you.
The next two questions are from C Bazina. The first question is, has the council discussed the issue of a drug injection room being created in Brimbank? If so, what was the conclusion?
Thanks, Mr Bazina, for your question. So Brimbank Council has not discussed the issue of a supervised injecting facility. However, council has discussed the broader issue of drug and alcohol use in Brimbank. At the Brimbank Ordinary Council meeting on the 21st of August 2018, the council moved to write to the Department of Health and Human Services seeking expansion of primary and secondary needle and syringe programmes in the city of Brimbank. The basis of this motion was recent research that showed an increase in injecting drug... Drug use in Brimbank and gaps in services. Brimbank has only one supervised injecting facility, which is currently funded by the state government and operated by the North Yarra Community Health Centre in Richmond. There has been no proposal from the state government to establish such a facility in the city of Brimbank. While council does not provide alcohol and other drug services directly, a number of council functions contribute to minimising related harms. If you would like further information, I can organise for a council officer to speak to you directly.
The second question from C Bazina is, why isn't the council being more proactive with landlords eradicating graffiti on commercial buildings that back the rail line between Sunshine and Albion that front Harvester Road, this being the gateway for interstate visitors with both the Sydney train and future airport line?
Thanks again, Mr Bazina, great question and something that we definitely share your concern on. So the issue of graffiti is a constant struggle for this council. The removal of graffiti is governed by the Graffiti Prevention Act of 2007, which prescribes legislative steps required of council to remove graffiti from private property. In the area mentioned, council is required to serve notices on property owners and receive permission to enter the property to remove the graffiti. If this position... permission is not given, council cannot remove the graffiti. When issues and signs are brought to council's attention, a notice is served on the landowner seeking their cooperation and asking them to remove or paint over the graffiti. To assist the property owner, council has vouchers available to purchase paint and other equipment. Prevention is always the preferred avenue and council works with local police to avoid instances of graffiti and tagging that occur. Thank you.
Uh, the next question is from B Singh, what are the conditions to park food trucks in public parking after hours?
Thanks, Mr Singh. Any food truck must be certified under the state government street trader permit system before any council permit would be considered. Then council may issue permits for the operation of food trucks at certain times and in specific areas, usually through recreation reserves throughout the municipality. Trading by food trucks in any other areas and times is not permitted. Some traders have located their food trucks in the... on the apron areas of private properties throughout the municipality, such as various service stations. These operations do not require council permits due to their location on private properties. In order to fully discuss the times and locations that food trucks may be granted a permit, the resident may wish to contact council city compliance department on 92494000.
The next two questions are from M Simra. The first question is, could council please elaborate on the process undertaken in deciding to install light towers at Ralph Reserve?
Thank you, Miss Simra. Council's adopted sports facility development plan includes an annual sports ground lighting upgrade programme with a priority order determined via established criteria. These criteria are demand, ability to increase facility capacity, condition, urgent maintenance and increased participation. The plan was updated in 2018 with Ralph Reserve determined to be the second highest priority across Brimbank and scheduled for completion in the 2018-2019 financial year.
The second question is, if a member of the Brimbank constituency makes a complaint about the construction of light towers just outside the perimeter of their property, can they expect to have the details of the conversation kept private?
Thanks again, Miss Simra. To the extent to which a community member who makes a complaint is entitled to expect this information will be kept private depends on the circumstances in which the complaint was made. In the absence of detailed information, I'm not able to revise whether the expectation held by the member of the Brimbank constituency is justifiable.
The next question is by Kay Gracie. The latest assessments from world authorities on the escalating climate crisis indicate that we've approximately 12 years to properly address climate change and avoid the very worst of climate catastrophes. As Brimbank is particularly vulnerable to climate change because of its geographic and demographic profile, this issue needs to be council's utmost priority. When will Brimbank Council join the rapidly increasing number of local governments worldwide, currently numbering over 330, and declare a climate emergency?
Thanks for your question, Miss Gracie. Brimbank City Council through its greenhouse reduction strategy of 2013 to 2023 has committed to a 50% reduction of its 2011 greenhouse gas emissions by 2023. Through this strategy, which was revised in 2018, council has declared its position, which is to commit to the science on climate change and to target set through the Paris Accord agreement. Council's adoption of its first climate change adaptation plan in 2017 provides an action plan related to climate change. Declaring a climate emergency is not an identified action of the plan. However, your proposition will be referred to the review of the climate change adaption plan for further consideration.
The last two questions are by P Thompson. The first question is, could you please tell me the full costs involving... Of everything involving the accusations and results hearings against councillor Hedditch? This should be known to the ratepayers of Brimbank, particularly when it was found that councillor Hedditch had no case at all to answer to. Also, whatever the costs add to council, will they need to be paid back as a result of the hearing?
Thank you, Mr Thompson. The full cost of the recent councillor conduct panel process is not yet known. The state government has determined that the costs associated with councillor conduct panel hearings are met by the relevant council. Any costs to the council will not need to be paid back as a result of the hearing.
The next question is, could you please tell me why councillor Allen had a July to September 2018 quarterly travel expense of $7,219.15 when no other councils had any travel expenses that quarter except for councillor Trung, which was $45.45? This seems to be enormous amount out of the ordinary for only one councillor, particularly when most of the amount was in one month only, which was July.
Thank you again, Mr Thompson. Uh, councillor Allen's travel costs represent the travel costs he claimed for private vehicle use while undertaking official council duties during the period of the 2nd of November 2016 to the 27th of June 2018. Councillor Allen claimed for these costs in July to September 2018 quarter and the approximately 19 months of costs were reimbursed by council within the same period, which is why it appears in the report as a lump sum. Okay, so that's the end of the public question time this evening. So we're going to move on to item number 10, which is petitions. There is one petition to be received this evening, so councillors, I'll be asking for a procedural motion to formally receive this petition. May I... and the petition is relation to gum tree removal on Copernicus Avenue. Councillors may have a mover of a motion to receive this petition.
Move the motion as printed in the business papers, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Juditshire. Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Borg? Thank you. I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, item number 11 is minutes and reports for special committees. There are no minutes or reports from any special committee meetings to be tabled at this meeting, so we'll move straight on to item number 12, which is officer reports. So councillors, there are currently 15 reports for consideration by council tonight. And we'll start off with item 12.1, which is planning activity update and delegate decisions, December 2018 and January 2019. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is a mover of the motion? Councillor Fam?
So I would like to move the, uh, report, it is printed in the paper, thanks.
Thank you councillor Fam, do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Trung? Would the mover like to speak to the motion? No, thanks. Thank you. The second to like to speak? No, is there any further debate on this item, councillors? No? I'll put the... I'll put the item to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir, the gallery is not able to ask questions in a council meeting? Where? Sorry, sir, we don't ask public questions to the gallery during an open council meeting. They need to be in writing by 12 o'clock on the day of the council meeting. So we're happy to answer any questions outside of this process, but this is for the business of conducting council. So if you want to contact us tomorrow, we'll be happy to talk to you. Thank you. Contact the reception number, you can find it on the website. Nine...
92494000.
92494000 is the number. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number 12.2, which is planning compliance update, 1 October to 31st December 2018. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Okay, do we have a mover of the motion? No? Okay, do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Tacos?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion as put in the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second hour for the, for the item? Councillor Borg?
I second this matter, um, mayor.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Does the mover wish to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to know whilst it's pleasing to see council planning compliance Chris down from the previous quarter, which I believe is the reflection, uh, the spike associated with being more proactive in enforcement, particularly in the Brooklyn and North Sunshine estates by our compliance team. I note that the two court cases relate to people using the land for materials of recycling without planning permits. This is a constant issue that we, we do have in Brimbank. It's great to see our compliance team great in being proactive, which in turn reduces the amount of breaches of compliance. So I'd just like to thank our team for that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Would the seconder wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Borg?
I would like to thank the, um, the team again for their hard work and it's always a grace to see such positive results. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? Councillor Judit Chair?
Okay, it's just deciding. Just on the compliance report, Madam Mayor, I think council continues to find and prosecute those who are littering, littering and dumping rubbish and as stated in the report, those who use their land and others for illegal dumping. We are advocating to this government to change legislation regarding illegal activity to do with re, with the recycling and the miniskip industry. This is not only an issue to do with rubbish, but also an environmental issue. Council will continue to lobby on behalf of the community on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judit Chair. Is there anyone else speaking, wishing to speak to this, for or against this item? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, item number twelve point three, councillor Fam?
Yeah, I would like to declare in direct conflict of interest that I have the property nearby decide.
Thank you, councillor Fam. We have the minutes updated to reflect councillor Fam declared a conflict of interest and left the meeting. Okay, so councillors, item number twelve point three is the application P eight six two dash two thousand and seventeen for approval of a development plan and a development plan overlay scheduled to fifteen for a site at two four seven and two six seven St Albans Road, Sunshine North. Councillors, is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No. Do we have a mover of a motion? Councillor Headitch?
I'd like to move the motion in accordance with the council papers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Is there a second for this item? Councillor David, with a mover wish to speak to the item?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this particular proposal has caused us a, a great deal of thought. It's a significant site on St Albans Road and Development Victoria have been working with council quite some time to uh, put forward their plans and to discussion, negotiate and negotiate on them. Uh, I guess from a community perspective, there have been a number of issues around, uh, safety, particularly with the traffic on St Albans Road being so, so busy and the, uh, the need for traffic lights and the need for pedestrian crossings and so on. Uh, we understand that the officers have been in discussion with both Development Victoria and Vic Roads on this and that there is a, a clause in, uh, attachment five to this particular report that, uh, that deals with further negotiation around some of that and I think, uh, that is satisfying us at this point in time. Uh, there's also been discussion about the environmental, uh, impacts and, uh, there's been environmental audits conducted which have been shown to be satisfactory. Uh, there's been, uh, conversations about, uh, the amount of open space and land being set aside for uh, future residents to be able to enjoy the, uh, the, the site and the, uh, the area around Stony Creek and, uh, that has all come up, uh, trumps in these last pieces of information we've been getting today. So I guess, uh, in summary, uh, Madam Mayor, the overall application whilst we had quite a few issues to, uh, to get through a week ago, we seem to have got there, uh, to a satisfactory point at the moment, uh, where officers and councillors, uh, generally, uh, uh, in, in accord with what's being presented to us. Uh, I look forward to, uh, further advice from the, uh, council officials about how, uh, negotiations may go into the future around the road. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Does the second wish to speak? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too like to, or we do, as a council, welcome investment out of a developer in our city, uh, especially of this, um, uh, site in North Sunshine is to do with affordable housing. Um, one bedroom, I heard the developers speaking to us last week, two bedrooms, three bedrooms and that of four bedrooms. Uh, we need that because of university course buy, maybe students, uh, would be welcoming the idea of that. Uh, the only thing I, um, I didn't like to see is to do with the, um, traffic. And councillor Headitch spoke about this, uh, especially the crossing of St Albans Road. But I've taken the words of the, uh, of our officers and I trust our officers to, uh, speak to Vic Roads in due course that maybe we can turn that into a trafficking tower of lights instead of push-button lights. Other than that, I think I, I welcome the idea of building in North Sunshine. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillor, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this motion? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. We'll just wait a moment while councillor Fam comes back in. Welcome back, councillor Fam. So we're moving on to item number twelve point four, which is the councillor portfolio system review, an appointment to portfolios and committees, February two thousand and nineteen. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Okay, councillors, I understand that based on earlier conversations, we may have. The minutes may have been updated to reflect some of the earlier discussions, but I wonder if anyone would have a move, a motion? Councillors, do we have a, a motion? Councillor Borg?
Madam Mayor, I would like to move the motion as per, as printed in the business papers.
Okay, and I understand we're working on the business papers?
Uh, no, so what we've done is we've updated what's on the screen. If you can scroll up.
Yes. Councillor Borg is a mover of the motion. Would you mind reading out, um, the motion as printed on the screen, just to confirm that everyone is comfortable? With that, can you read?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That, um, uh, council appoints councillors to portfolios for the period from twentieth February two thousand and nineteen until council resolves otherwise as follows. Resilient Brimbank advocacy, two positions. Um, mayor, councillor, Congreve and councillor Tacos. Vibrant Brimbank position, one position, councillor Fam. Prosperous Brimbank, one position, councillor Headitch. Sustainable Brimbank, one position, councillor, councillor Trung. Brimbank People, one position, councillor Borg. Livable Brimbank, one position, councillor Lancashire. Brimbank Proud, one position, councillor Allen. Healthy Brimbank, one position, councillor Papa Fotio. Connecting Brimbank, one position, councillor David. And Brimbank Innovation, one position, councillor Goodie Jay.
Thank you, councillor Borg. And if you could, apologies, continue with the committees.
Okay, yes. And the second part of, of the, um, of the motion is that council appoints representatives, delegates to the committees for the period from twentieth of February two thousand and nineteen until council resolves otherwise as follows. Audit and risk management con, um, committee, councillor uh, Good, Judy Jay and councillor Headitch and councillor Tacos as substitute. Brimbank of regional and tourist trade island reconciliation action plan consultative committee, councillor Fam, co-chair and councillor Borg, co-chair. Brimbank Arts Advisory Committee, councillor Fam as a chair. Brimbank Disability Advisory Committee, councillor Borg, co-chair and councillor Headitch, co-chair. Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Strategy Committee, councillor Trung, chair. Collective Action Committee, councillor Borg, co-chair, councillor Papa Fotio, co-chair and councillor Goodie Jay. Uh, Arrington Precinct Master Plan Community Reference Group Sport and Recreation Projects, councillor Papa Fotio, co-chair and councillor Fam, co-chair, why, um, and councillor Tacos. Heritage Advisory Committee, councillor Lancashire. Municipal Emergency Management Plan Committee, councillor Judy Jay and as a chair and councillor Papa Fotio. Stage T Roundtable, councillor Borg, co-chair and councillor Trung, co-chair. Social Justice Coalition Strategic Implementation Group, councillor Tacos, chair, councillor Borg. Uh, St Albans Town Centre Partnership Group, councillor Headitch, chair and councillor Tacos. Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group, councillor Headitch, co-chair, councillor David, co-chair and councillor Trung. Sydney Park Master Plans Steering Committee, councillor Congreve, chair, councillor Lancashire, councillor Judy Jay, um, councillor Papa Fotio and councillor Tacos. Uh, Ballarat Rail Action Committee, councillor David. Brimbank Community Fund Advisory Committee, councillor Allen and councillor Judy Jay, uh, substitute. Brooklyn Community Representative Group, councillor David, chair, councillor Trung and councillor Headitch. Calder Highway Improvement Committee, councillor David and councillor Lancashire. Lead Westport Limited, councillor Tacos and councillor Congreve alternate. Um, Melbourne Regional Landfill Community Reference Group, councillor Lancashire. Metropolitan Local Government Waste Management Forum, councillor, uh, Lancashire. Metropolitan Transport Forum, councillor Fam. Municipal Association of Victoria State Council, councillor Congreve and councillor Tacos alternate. There's more. Western Melbourne Tourism, councillor Allen and councillor Fam alternate.
Thank you, councillor Borg, and I take the rest as printed in the business papers. I did have one query though. Um, it was in relation to the, um, the municipal emergency, which I think that we've listed down councillor Judit Chair as a chair and there is no chair position. So if we could just clarify. That before we vote on that. Great. Okay, so, um, did we have a second hour for that motion? Councillor Tacos? And councillor Borg, you've done very well in reading all that out. Would you, would you now like to speak to the motion?
Quite a challenge. Yes, Madam Mayor. It is great to see, um, the portfolios that were established for Pilate here being so successful. Indeed, the feedback provided by councillors, um, indicated portfolios were a valuable addition to the governance structure. The feedback also included a number of recommendations which have been incorporated in the proposed portfolios model. Embedded in this new model, um, is ten portfolios as advisory committees for council and three new portfolios, Connecting Brimbank, Healthy Brimbank and Brimbank Proud. Um, at a personal level, level, I feel very excited about these allocations and I would also like to take the opportunity to commend all the hard work that has been behind all the portfolio, most specifically Hillary Hastings. And, um, we look forward to the next two years, um, in our new roles as allocated in our respective portfolio.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Well said. Um, does the second wish to speak? Councillor Tacos?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The portfolios have given all of us, I'd like to endorse also what my co-councillor colleague has just said and the portfolios have given all of us an opportunity not only to be knowledge champions but to start being key spokespeople on the important issues, um, as well as reviewing that there are emerging new needs that we need to meet in our community. As mentioned, the three new portfolios covering those new, uh, emerging needs. The two-year terms give us, gives us ample time and opportunity to learn about the areas and make, uh, genuine learnings and also contributions and share with each other, uh, areas and taking the leadership as well as sharing key and significant information in the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Councillor Judit Chair?
I'll be speaking definitely for Madam Mayor. Um, it's a great opportunity for all councillors, uh, to have actually come on board with the portfolio system. I for one was a little bit sceptical in the very beginning, but I think I warmed to the idea and I actually love it at the moment. So it's very good. Last year, of course, as the mayor, I was on the Sicilian portfolio. Now you have taken on that role and I have swapped with you on innovation. So I'm looking forward to the innovation portfolio and to seeing what this council can do out there with innovation. I commend my fellow councillors as well for taking on the portfolios. It is a great learning opportunity. The, the officers have done a wonderful job in preparing all of this and of course, it's always important to know that councillors are able to attend ex officio on any of the portfolio meetings. So might be a good idea for all of us to attend one or two every once in a while, just to have a well-rounded view of what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Judit Chair. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Got councillor Headitch first and then councillor Fam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I reinforce all the comments that have been made before me. I think also, uh, we have to acknowledge that portfolios are new to this council and we are still learning and developing as a council and, uh, they will help us do that quite a bit. Uh, I, we notice, uh, as we go around the western region and other parts of Melbourne that, uh, councils are using portfolios as a way of, um, getting champions in areas, getting champions developed in areas and, uh, that is a really good thing. We need champions in this community. We have a lot to do, as you said earlier. Uh, we have a, a community that we need to lift and we need a community that needs to be invested in by state and federal governments. Portfolios give us the opportunity to identify in some depth, the research, the evidence, the actual goings-on in this community, the key issues, so that we can put them forward into filters that, uh, go through our advocacy committees and so on to work out what we want to do as priorities. But, uh, for me, the portfolio system is a great way of developing councillors we need to develop as a council as we go forward. Uh, we are still, uh, learning and growing and that's a terrific thing. So, uh, I commend the, uh, the report to councillors as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Councillor Fam, do you like to speak?
Um, I just don't know what the word, uh, word that I have to put toward the portfolio, um, meeting because it give, I think it's give all of us the chance to work in deep with whatever we passionate about. Um, understanding more of the issue in how to repair for it to come forward. Um, and that involve a lot of work from the staff. Uh, toward the committee, it's opened my eyes so much to join, uh, especially the, uh, external committee to see thing in the state and federal level, but also bring the grassroots issue from our council to that committee to share with other people and see how we can move forward, uh, to advocate for our, our own. Thank you.
Great. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? No? Okay, I'll put the item to, I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, so we now move on to item twelve point five, which is the governance report, February two thousand and nineteen. Councillors, are there any questions or, um, points of clarification on this item? No? Do we have a mover of a motion? Councillor Judit Chair?
I'll move the motion as printed in the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Borg? And would the mover wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, um, this, uh, governance report does fall under my portfolio, which, to which I've just been reappointed, so thank you very much. Um, and I would just like to highlight a couple of things within the report. Uh, we, at the Order and Risk Committee, we do have a new chairman, which we've appointed and of course we thank the chairman once again, the Michael Beer. And we do have a new chairman that's, uh, who is coming on board. We also have under delegation some new works being approved and I'm happy, um, to talk about the ones in the Taylor's Ward and they are the change rooms at Lionheart Reserve, sports lighting works at Kilor Lodge and park upgrades at Green Gully Reserve. This is in line, of course, with, um, This is in line, of course, with the council's vision when we first came in to actually increase the capacity at our sporting grounds and also our reserves. So I'm very happy to commend the report, Madam Mayor, and say well done to everybody involved in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. And just a clarification please, that the independent chair may be appointed on the passing of this motion.
Okay.
Um, with the second, does the seconder wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Borg?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the former independent chair for the work that he has done on with this committee, Mr Michael Beer. And I would like to congratulate the new coming candidate, the new chairperson. And to my understanding, it's Mr Geoffrey Harry?
Geoffrey Harvey, yes.
Ha-
Harry.
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 Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this motion, councillors? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Geoffrey Harry is now appointed. Okay, so we'll move on to item twelve point six, which is the quarterly financial report for the period ending thirty-one December two thousand and eighteen. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I had one question relating to the VAGO offices, six sustainability indicators. We have half a dozen of those there which are all low risk, except for one, the asset renewal, which is medium. We're having a lot of conversations at the moment about our level of our risk and our risk indicators, and also the level of borrowings we need to think about into the future. I'm just wondering if the CEO or the financial heroes can tell us just how long this profile has been in place at council, this fairly low-risk profile. Is it something that's been in place for about ten years or so? I have a sense of it myself, but I'm just wondering.
Sorry, over to Ms Morrissey to respond.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair, for as long as I have been here, which is nearly ten years, it has been at that level, it's been a low risk.
And can I ask a subsequent question? Is it also, the SEFA index has also, Brimbank sits second from the bottom on the SEFA index. Has that's also been the same roughly for the last ten years?
Ms Morrissey?
As I understand, yes, we're second on the metropolitan but third Victoria-wide. I think we were second Victoria-wide, so slight movement, but not to the degree that we would like.
Thank you.
No further questions? Okay. Great, thanks. Councillors, any other questions or points of clarification on this one? No? Do I have a motion, councillors? Councillor Headitch? Would you like to move the motion?
I'd like to move the motion in accord with the papers. Thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Allen? Would the mover wish to speak to the motion, councillor Headitch?
Again, I'd like to compliment the officers and the CEO on the report. Again, we find ourselves in a very good financial position as a council, but as a council also needing to do a heck of a lot of work. And we feel that pressure every year. This is budget time, we're into the planning phases, and hence my questions earlier. I guess for me, I keep talking about catch-up and, you know, federal and state government contributions to this place, we have great difficulty with that. And I think we've experienced that recently with the St Albans Pool, where we have an ask of around twenty-five million of contributions from different sources and we haven't got a lot of money at all for them. So this community's been left with the yoke around its neck to fund the improvements it needs to lift its community from the position on the SEFA, you know. And I want to acknowledge really clearly that this is a great community first and foremost. It has a lot of really good things happening in it. It is a community to be proud of. But we also need to make it really clear that it's a community that leads, needs others, government, state and federal, private, not-for-profit sectors to invest heavily in it, to help it lift from the position it currently finds itself in. We don't have any easy access to money. We have trucks that drive past from treasurers out to the growth corridors. Areas like ours, which are in and been under provided for over the decades, are left behind to some extent. So I commend the officers for this great financial report. There's a lot of detail in it, a lot of ups and downs and swings and roundabouts, as there are with financial reports. But at the end of the day, this community has been well served by its financial strategies. I think we need to now determine whether we need to take a little bit more risk. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Would the seconder like to speak to this item? Councillor Allen? No? Would anyone else like to speak? Councillor Tacos?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to also endorse what my co-councillor, councillor Headitch, has just said. I guess my concern is that the praise is that we are very low with indebtedness at thirty-three percent, which indicates a very low risk, and that is a good thing. And we have the ability to repay debt from our own revenue sources. But given our council has made a commitment to our community on a lag of infrastructure, a lag of sporting facilities, and we've made that strong commitment that we want to deliver, this indebtedness may have to change. We may need to look at, because we are solely reliant on our rates-based revenue, we as a council also recognise that there are huge gaps and lags in for our community, which is growing by the day. So it's something for us to ponder as councillors moving into the future with our budget. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tacos. Councillors, are there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this report? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. Carried. Okay, we're now moving to item twelve point seven, which is revised sale of surplus land policy two thousand and nineteen. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Okay, do we have a mover of a motion? Councillor Tacos?
Yes, I would like to move the motion as put in the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tacos. And is there a seconder?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Judy Chair? Would the mover wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Tacos?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I note that not many changes have been made to this policy, but with the introduction of the VAGO report, which we are all as councillors familiar discussing, where we are referencing in the past, is adding an additional context to this policy before us. Madam Mayor, I do note that no sales of surplus land reports have been put before us at this council as yet. I note that this is a positive sign of the value this council places on all its land holdings, which it may need for future for open space or other community needs. As we become more urbanised and face a lot more speedy population growth, all spaces must be valued and retained. I also note that before any land is even considered for sale, it has to pass a considerable due diligence process and very robust statutory process, which exists in this new revised policy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tacos. The seconder wish to speak to this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, in two thousand and nine, DEWLP released the reporting to the local government best practice guidelines for the sale, exchange and transfer of land. Note that eight years later, in two thousand and eighteen, the Victorian Auditor General, VAGO, released the Managing Surplus Government Land Audit Report with some interesting comments, as highlighted in our council report before us this evening. Mainly proper data of land holdings and their use and best value of use of that land and how to dispose fairly of that land. It was found that a whole-of-government approach was necessary, therefore establishing the Land Use Victorian Agency. Our policy was found to be consistent with the VAGO report. We will now, however, be introducing a surplus land analysis report to strengthen our policy, and each piece of land to which the policy applies will be assessed accordingly. I wish to reassure residents that no land will be sold unnecessarily and without a full analysis. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Councillor Headitch?
I'd like to speak for the motion, Madam Mayor. This particular policy is much needed and it's great to see it on the deck. The VAGO report that came out not too long ago highlighted the need for policies such as this. And I recall how we wished that this particular policy was in place at a state level when a number of school sites were sold around this community and basically took away a lot of opportunity for future development of sport and recreation and various other, and education facilities that are under provided at the moment. I think the policy is a really good one for this council and for the community going forward. It allows that filtering, that due diligence, that understanding of land and the strategic value of land into the future. It's so important that we leave land for future generations, that we leave a land buffer for future generations to be able to develop the facilities and resources that they will need as a community in that time. So I commend the surplus land policy, the sale of surplus land policy to the council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this particular item? No? I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you councillors. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point eight, which is probably going to be a very popular one in our communities, the draft parking strategy of two thousand and nineteen. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Do I have a motion on this item? Is there a motion?
Move, Madam Mayor. As printed in the business papers.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. Is there a seconder for this item? Councillor Tacos? Would the mover wish to speak to the item?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, it is just the draft strategy. So we will be consulting on this report for a six-week, a six-week period. So an enormous amount of work has gone into this report, so a big thank you to all the officers involved. It is a new strategy and part of this council's approach to resolving and attempting to resolve, advocating for and mitigating the parking problems within our city. Of course, other government departments will also need to address their parking problems as well. For example, train stations. Council will continue to advocate for these improvements. I look forward to reading and analysing submissions to this strategy. I urge everyone interested to have your say.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. And with the seconder like to speak, councillor Tacos?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would also like to thank all the work that's been put into this strategy. It is a source of, parking is a source of frustration and angst for our community's residents, businesses, visitors and employees. Better managing existing car parking is extremely appointing. This is an opportunity and I encourage all community members and rate pays to please make submissions in the next six weeks whilst this is a draft strategy for consultation. I also would like to support the Brimbank Disability Network. It's called for more disabled car parking located close to key destinations and much greater enforcement around it, and also to consider paid parking as an option for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tacos. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I support the comments made earlier by councillors Gudditch and Tacos. I just wanted to make the point that this is a strategic framework. It does have a look at parking in activity centres, parking in residential areas, and parking in other parts of the community. It is a very important part of our day-to-day living, parking, and a very important part of our day-to-day life as councillors, because by heck, we get a lot of people chewing our ear about it and rightly so. This particular process enables the community to have a look at the strategic framework and to think about it from their perspective, from where they live or work or come and visit. And I look forward to the contributions that community will make to enhance and strengthen this strategy and eventually an implementation plan that will go with it. I commend it to the council.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you councillors. We're moving on to item twelve point nine, which is Household Management of Food and Organic Waste. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Councillor Trung, I saw you put your hand up. I assume you want to move a motion? Thank you. Would you like to move the motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved a recommendation printed in the agenda paper.
Thank you councillor Trung. Do I have a seconder for the motion? Councillor Headitch? Thank you. Councillor Trung, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam May. At the ordinary council meeting on twenty of November two thousand and eighteen, I raised a notice of motion requesting council receive a report of motion which supports Brimbank household, managed food and garden waste outside, including the information about a post-match cost and benefit and the community education and engagement. This notice of motion is supported and this report and the statement provide it respond to the notice of motion. Food weight account for nearly half of content of a van household curbside landfill bin. Keeping this weight out of landfill reduce weight of management cost in loose landfill level and it may cause a range of negative environment outcome. Organized material that's and up in the landfill is subject to compostion. This produce bring how gas which contributes to limewood chain. And has compost, compost producer via household of food and garden waste in useful product. That can be add on the resident garden and regional quality soil. This improvement soil and better the retaining water and nutrition and is able to support land through right condition. Garden is healthy and popular activity, especially among further older resident. So, as the report outlined, the option that support household a run from council current business agency service provision to the finance incentive, education and engagement and packet home compost program. The recommend option called the Brimbank Home Compost Program made it easy and expensive for the resident compost to the packet of repay. Information and engagement opportunity task book, household in home composting. Information this option will also provide risk and support to the resident from culturally and legally diverse in community. So I commend that report and recommendation to council and ask for your continued support for this important initiative. And I also would like to thank you to the team of environment is prepare anything ready to for the resident in Brimbank council. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you councillor Trung. And with the seconder wish to speak to the motion, councillor Headitch?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Would anyone else like to speak for or against this item? Councillor Judy Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is an important medium-term action coming out of the recently adopted Waste Recycling and Litter Strategy, which was adopted by council last year. Whilst it would be ideal to introduce FOGO, the Food Organics and Garden Organics, right across the board as a weekly collection, council will be looking at this in the next budgets and according to all the plans. This report outlines a home compost bin system, which I think will be a perfect initiative to educate more residents about composting with a little reward, for at least three hundred residents anyway. A fifty-dollar rebate for each bin purchased. I commend the report and urge residents to become involved. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this motion? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to item twelve point ten, councillor Judy Chair?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I have an interest in this item. It's an indirect interest. Club Italia, of which I am the president, is actually included in the Shrep report, so I will absent myself for this item.
Thank you councillor Judy Chair. We update the minutes to reflect councillor Judy Chair's departure. Okay, councillors, are there any, so the item is item twelve point ten, Draft Sunshine Health Wellbeing and Education Precinct Land Use and Development Plan, Key Features. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Papa Fortio?
I would like to move the reports printed in the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Headitch? Would the mover wish to speak to the motion? Thank you councillor Papa Fortio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As co-chair of this committee with councillor Headitch, I would like to note the following six points. Firstly, this report presents to council the submissions received regarding the key features in the draft Sunshine Health Wellbeing and Education Precinct Land Use and Development Plan prepared by the VP- Sunshine Health Wellbeing and Education Precinct Land Use and Development Plan prepared by the V P A. It recommends that council provide this summary of submissions shown at attachment two to the V P A. And provide council feedback to inform the finalisation of SREP plan. Noting that a further report will be presented to council regarding the final draft plan. It is also recommended that council thank submitters for their feedback and advice of further work. The second point. The Sunshine Health Wellbeing and Education Precinct is identified as an anchor of the Sunshine National. Employment and Innovation Cluster. And the Health and Education Prince Precinct in the State Government Metropolitan Strategy Plan Melbourne. Third point, council and the V P A are working in partnership to finalise the draft SREP. Plan and associated planning provisions with the intent that a planning scheme amendment be prepared to implement. The land use and development directions. The fourth point being that council undertook consultation. On the draft SREP plan for a four week period in July two thousand and eighteen. Council received nine submissions regarding the draft SREP plan and the summary of the submissions. And the council officer assessment is shown at attachment to, to this report. The fifth point being the feedback covered. A range of issues including concerns about height limits, the interface with development. The need to integrate and improve Stony Creek, the importance of encouraging health, wellbeing and education uses. The importance of delivering improved pedestrian and cycling connections. Giving consideration to easement and concern about increased vehicle traffic in the area. And the last point being that council is actively working with the V P A to address the above issues. And other matters in relation to the proposed comprehensive development zone. Um, also the precinct boundary and proposed development contributions plan and development contributions plan overlay. I commend this report and the officer recommendation to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Papafotio. With the second I'd like to speak, councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support everything that councillor Papafotio has said and the, the detail was very reflective of an excellent process that we co-chired together. Um, councillor Borg was also on the committee and did some fine work as well. I think the, I won't go over the detail, councillor Papafotio has done that. But what struck me was the level of commitment by council officials, the team. And the V P A in pulling together a process that was really, really good. Uh, the people who are around the table with us, the agencies involved, uh, roads, environment, uh, landholders, private hospital. Uh, owners, developers and so on, uh, club Italia, uh. All uh, made a significant contribution to the uh, work that's been done here. And that process has been, you know, quite robust and it, it's reflected in the, I guess, ownership of this particular piece of work by all those stakeholders. Uh, the consultation, the process, the outcome, they all flow together. And I think the, the work that was done by the officers and the various councillors in working with others, uh, has been really valuable. So, I also, uh, uh, in line with councillor Papafotio, commend this particular report to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Councillor, is there any further discussion on this item? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. We'll just wait a moment for councillor Judiciary to re-enter the room. Welcome back, councillor Judiciary.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to item twelve point eleven now, which is a review of the municipal emergency management plan of two thousand and nineteen. Councillors, do we have any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Papafotio?
I move this report as printed in the papers.
Great. And is there a second for the motion?
Seconded, Madam May.
Councillor Judiciary. With the mover we should speak, councillor Papafotio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the Brimbank Municipal Emergency Planning Committee, which I am very proud a member of. I am pleased to move the council officer recommendation that the revised mu- municipal emergency management plan. Including the community emergency risk assessment and the municipal emergency management. Planning Committee Terms of Reference be considered for adoption. In developing these documents, I would like to acknowledge the tireless efforts of all our emergency service representatives. And thank them for their hard work and dedication. Brimbank's Municipal Emergency Management Planning Committee is made up of the following representatives. From Victoria Police, Victoria State Emergency Service, Metropolitan Fire Brigade. Ambulance Victoria, Department of Health and Human Services, Local and Regional Red Cross. Parks Victoria, Local Service Authorities, Local Major Water Gardens Facilities. Water Gardens Management. And Brimbank City Council. I would also like to acknowledge the wonderful work of council management staff. And these include, um, the director Neil Whiteside, Tom Razmowski. Alex Karinaos, John McDonough, John Met- Metrowo? Metrowo? Mark Sadler, Nicole Lindsay and Debbie Coleman. I highly support and commend this report and officer recommendation to council.
Thank you, councillor Papafotio. Councillor Judiciary, would you like to speak as a second up?
Just simply to echo councillor, councillor Papafotio's comments, it is a wonderful committee to be on and I'm so very happy that I've been reassigned to that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judiciary. Councillor, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? Okay, I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're moving on to item twelve point twelve, which is the final draft fairness equity. And respect strategy of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Do we have a motion? Councillor Borg?
I'll move the motion as per documents in the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Tacos? And would the mover like to speak? Councillor Borg?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Um, as one of the, um. People portfolio councillors, um, while this strategy was being developed. I am pleased to see the final draft of this strategy being presented to council for approval. Research shows that a number of social problems, including violence against women, are rooted in gender. Uh, inequality. Women are more disadvantaged than men in job opportunities. Education, social mobility and financially related, um, matters. Such inequality. Such inequalities also exist in Brimbank, more specifically domestic violence. Um, we as a council need to have a strategy for directions to find ways. To continue to re- to address these inequalities and to foster a culture of respectful relationships towards women. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to, uh, uh, thank councillor Papafotio. Who was one of the councillors on the people portfolio while this strategy being developed. And I would also like to commend all the work that has been done by Dan Hogan. And his team for preparing this strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. With the second I'd like to speak, councillor Tacos?
Just briefly, uh, to endorse, uh, what my co- coun- councillor col- um, colleague just said. I also note that the draft strategy aligns with the government policy directions and state government's response. To the two hundred and twenty-seven recommendations for the Royal Commission into Family Violence handed down in two thousand and seventeen. I commend fully the work and comprehensive consultation taken, um, across fifty groups in Brimbank. Um, of this important and key strategy and measures to prevent family violence and gender inequality. And to promote respectful relationships in, uh, Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Councillor, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Councillor Headitch?
I would like to speak for it, Madam Mayor, and I echo the words of the previous two councillors, councillor Borg and Tacos. Uh, I guess for me, uh, the, uh, principal approach around, uh. Fairness, equality and respect are really important ones. And as a council, we know the importance of principles and values. Uh, I'm, uh, involved in some work in this community on, um, a small group called the Men of Brimbank. And, uh, those principles and values are part of their, their charter. Uh, the reason is that, uh, there are too many, uh, violence issues, uh, against women in this community. And that there is a need for men to stand up, speak out and act on behalf of, uh. Women in the community and particularly when we see and observe, uh, instances of, uh, of violence, uh, towards women. I note the amendments in this particular policy have picked up, uh, men as well, so there's a comprehensive, uh, policy approach. And I noticed that the term respectful relationships has been added. Uh, I think that, uh, to me, all that does is remind me that when we see, uh, acts of violence, whether they be. Any type of violence, uh, physical, emotional or so on, that we do stand up, we do speak out and we do act. We do call them out, we do try and make change and we do try to improve cultures, because that's what it's all about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Councillor Judiciary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an important strategy for this council, Madam Mayor. Consultation has taken place formally. And apart from that though, I'm sure that councillors also have spoken to the community on this policy. Uh, we are contacted every day, I think, on, on some of these issues. An important, uh, point though, Madam Mayor, was raised by one of the organisations who did submit. Urging council to be careful in the wording of the policy to not demonise men. And also to protect each individual irrespective of gender or age. Council does condemn all forms of violence irrespective of who. Council also promotes respectful relationships and preventing family violence. The action plan which will be formulated, of course, um, will help to implement the strategy. And, um, it will reflect the key achievements. And of course, I look forward to seeing those back in our council report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judiciary. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Councillor Trung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I for support all the mention from other councillor, councillor. But I, um, I would like to add, it's like Brimbank, we are have a, uh, lack number of the cow community. So it's more support education and, um. Acknowledge for especially it the new migrants people are right about family violence. And I think it early intervention, um, of family violence and violent again woman, it really important for the. Uh, cow community, especially it with pair it very with the language. Uh, if we go ahead, so it's more information, uh, to in different language. To support and give them the understand. And if we can have more leader in different cow community. To, uh, support education, all the different cow community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trung. Councillor, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point thirteen, which is advocacy items for notice of motion for national generally assem-. Sorry, National General Assembly of the Australian Local Government Association. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Tacos?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the motion as per business papers. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a second for that motion? Councillor Trum? Does a mover wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, briefly, Madam Mayor, I'd like to commend the, um, the identified advocacy priorities as listed. Being early childhood education, gambling harm and sustainability. Madam Mayor, um, I would like to particularly, uh, pleased that, uh, point B. Uh, raises that the National General Assembly recognises the impact of gambling harm on local communities in Australia and calls. For the federal government to introduce more stringent classification of video games that include loot boxes and similar. Items that redu- uh, that will reduce harms that may lead to future gambling behaviours. And that also calls on the government to close existing loopholes which enable gambling advertisements to be broadcast on television and radio. During children's viewing that leads to normalisation of gambling. Wearing my advocacy hat here, Madam Mayor, we do have a, a big issue with gambling. But what we're doing here is something in the proactive space where we're saying to the government, we need a lot more stringent controls, uh, around. Uh, this very, um, available games that, that, that kids are accessing on their iPads and computers and iPhones. And to stop at, in its tracks this behaviour from developing, uh, into possible, um. Problem gambling behaviour in the future. So I commend council for all the recommendations. But this one in particular needs to be a strong advocacy point for, from our council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Councillor Trum, would you like to speak as a second up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I support what the council, uh, councillor Tako talking, but I also would like to. Um, mention it gambling is a big issue and a problem in our community. So it, uh, all the recommendation, but we maybe have provide more activity. Um, more thing to encourage member in the community get involved for them to spread like, uh. Something, activity, um. In the library after that, or the encourage, uh, the family to get involved to get the. Sure for them to let time to spend in the gambling. So, I, I think that's it, perhaps we can, uh, look at. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillor, is there any other, um, speakers for or against this item? No? I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item twelve point one four, which is contract number nineteen dash two thousand six hundred. Agricultural power line clearance works nineteen dash three five one zero eight. Um, councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Have a mover, councillor Judiciary?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move reports twelve fourteen and twelve fifteen together, if I may, and as printed in the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Judiciary. So councillors, uh, councillor Judiciary has, uh, moved a motion to on block. Move, uh, the contract reports. So if everybody is comfortable to move items twelve point one four and twelve point one five. Um, do we have a second for that motion, councillor Papafotio? Do we have any, it's a procedural motion, but do we, uh, so there is no debate on that topic? So do we have any, do we have any concerns, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, so that very quickly takes us through to item number thirteen, which is notices of motion. So the first notice of motion is actually one of mine, so I wonder if someone would move a procedural motion for me to vacate the chair? Thank you, councillor Judiciary. So councillor Judiciary is moving a motion that councillor David take the chair.
That's right, that the deputy mayor take the chair, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And do we have a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tacos. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. This, um, notice of motion was put forward by the mayor, councillor Cronkiff. Uh, councillor Cronkiff, no, mayor, would you like to, uh, move the motion by reading?
I would. I'm just a little bit excited to be on this side of the desk, to be able to speak. It's been a while. So, um, I'd like to move a motion that council receives a report detailing options, including associated benefits, risks and costs. For council to respond to the challenge of alleged illegal brothels operating in the city of Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma- Madam Mayor. Can I have a check on that, please? Councillor Palmer? Would you like to speak, Madam Mayor?
I would. Thank you, councillor David, deputy mayor. So, uh, this is a really interesting issue that we have spoken about on many, many occasions as a council. And is of huge concern to our residents. I know that I have dealt with countless, countless complaints from our community. About illegal brothels allegedly operating. About illegal brothels allegedly operating within our municipality. So uh, it causes considerable stress and anxiety to neighbours, uh, whether they be resident residents or businesses. Um, and as we all know, that investigating illegal brothels is very, very challenging for local government to respond to. And given the the limited legislation that's um around this and the risk faced by council officers, it's very, very difficult for us to prosecute. Currently, our process is to refer anything or any allegations of illegal brothels to Victoria Police. And um, through the local police station and more specifically the Sex Industry Coordination Unit. However, the community has still got concerns in relation to the length of time that it's taken to investigate. These issues and I'm sure our police have a million other things to do as well. So we're not, this is not about. Um, throwing something at the police and saying you're not doing it fast enough. It is simply saying it's a long process. We recognise that. So the powers that enable us to work through um alleged brothels under the Planning Environmental. Act of nineteen eighty seven, as I mentioned before, are very, very limited. And given the issues um and concerns associated with the rise of alleged illegal brothels and lack of. Available tools under the Planning and Environment Act of nineteen eighty seven, this motion requests that an options paper be prepared. To explore a range of possible responsables that may be available to this council. So I've been doing some discussions um and have read a number of newspaper articles recently in relation to the work that the city of Kingston. Is doing in this area. Um, and they have appointed um dedicated investigators. Um, as a council to help them investigate the instances of alleged illegal brothels. And they have indeed closed down eighteen illegal brothels under this process. So um. My understanding is the city of Greater Dandenong have done something similar. And there's a number of about thirty four that's floating around in terms of these um investigators that have been able to. Investigate and close down in in those particular areas. For Brimbank, um, and as I mentioned before, I've had a number of people come up to me and talk about this, but I know of. At least six in the grasslands area that that are allegedly operating as brothels that members of the community have raised with me. Um, you know, some of these are having significant impact on local businesses. So. It it's it's a really, really challenging situation. I know of one particular business that contacted me that has a plaster wall between their business and. The um, the business operating next door illegally and they have had significant issues with noise. Coming through that um, through the walls, they've had to move staff into different areas of the building. And um, it has significantly impacted their business model and their operations. So it's a huge impost to them. The other interesting fact is that I'll be shortly speaking at a hepatitis forum uh for medical professionals over at VU. And some of the statistics that are coming through is that hepatitis B is that the highest, uh, Brimbank has the highest level of hepatitis V. In Victoria, which is of course transmitted by sexually or is one of the ways of being able to transmit that. So that's concerned to me. Um, licensed brothels, as we all know, they're highly regulated and they're regulated to ensure the safety of the workers. The protection of the workers and that proper practices are maintained, including using um appropriate protection while undergoing those acts. And when we have illegal brothels, there is no protection. These are, these brothels are are operating um. With no, no um requirements over the top of them, no legislation. There are, there's, we're hearing um cases of exploitation of workers. Improper acts being asked and being forced upon those workers, unprotected sex of course, and minimal in some cases no wages. We're also hearing of of instances where these brothels are being used to traffic drugs and other items. And I have to say that when I when I drive past a massage par- parlor on the front entrance, it's advertising discreet. Discreet rear entry. I wonder what might be happening in that premises that they might need to be having people coming and going in the back entrance. So, um, that's the reason that I've I've asked for this this to come through. I I'm really keen to see what the option paper. Comes through. I'm hoping and assuming that something, there there will be an option that comes through very similar to what the city of Kingston has. Um, and and I also look forward to talking to our fellow regional councils. I understand that this might be an issue that's been tabled at Lead West. I also know it was an issue that was tabled at Mav um at the Maine State Council meeting last year. So there's councils all over Melbourne are significantly looking into this issue. Thank you.
Would you ask him for an exception or time a minute?
Thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds, a minute. Councillor, councillor Headitch, second by councillor Trung.
Thank you. So councillors, just in, just in summing up, I think that we all agree. I see a lot of nods around the table, that this is a really serious issue for our community. We really, really need to get involved. If we can understand what the options paper comes back with, what costs are involved, what likely benefits there are. What are our options in helping our community to attack this issue? Because it is a big deal for them. And it's a big deal for us and we need to make sure that we're we're ending these practices. So thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Palm, would you like to speak? Thank you.
Um, after hearing what the mayor was saying, I feel very hopeless that I think I've been raising this issue since I just. Came into council and witnessing some of the brothel actually changing owners. And also witnessing eyesore unwanted personal item that hang. That hanging at the rear entrance of the brothel. Where a lot of children actually walk by the landway, there's a lot of shoppers, a lot of people and nothing getting done. Not including so many syringes that probably seeing around that place. I don't know what's, how long it will last from from now on and what can be done. I hope this will be improved, um, because it is such a harm. Not to see it, but to 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 just thinking about what were affecting the children nearby. People who live nearby, the family as well. Um, and also the worker that, you know, in those places. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Palm. Any other comments, councillors? Councillor Headitch?
Great notice of motion and supported fully. For me, uh, this particular issue is uh one that has a bit more depth to it. I think we've seen council and police work together really well uh in the Perth Avenue area where we had. An illegal brothel operating next to Perth Avenue shops. And it took local residents and plenty of other people to identify it. And then for the council to do a piece of work around the business and the. Uh, the leasing arrangements around the business and various other 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 business matters and worked in conjunction with police. Um, that particular illegal brothel was closed down and we now have the Sadie Blacks Cafe in place. What a difference. And that particular cafe is the like, you know, real, a real central point in the Albiun community now. Valued, people use it all the time and it makes such a difference. It is really, really good. So councillor, councillor Congreve needs to be commended for bringing this notice of motion to council. Councillor Fam needs to be commended for her constant um reminding us of this issue and the need to do things about it. I know in talking to people in the community around the Harvest Award, uh, that there have been people who've been doing their own. Research and walking into places that are called massage parlors on the front and have the uh back entry. Uh, and have gone in and found when they've asked for a massage that it's not a massage, that they they would be offered, it'd be something else altogether. And I know one particular individual uh did a quick survey and found there were ten in this immediate area. So it's a big issue. Uh, the biggest issue of all for me though, is that there are groups of women who are being transported. Between these facilities and the backs of trucks uh every day or two to move around and be shopped around as pieces of meat. And for me, we talked earlier about the fairness, uh, equity and and respectful, uh, respect strategy. Um, this is just flies in the face of it. So for me, uh, it's a no brainer. Thank you for bringing it forward. It is much needed and I think. The community generally would be highly supportive of any work that the council could do to uh work with in a cooperative relationship with the police. To bring about the demise of as many of these particular institutions as we can around the around the city. So uh, thank you councillor Congreve and thank you everyone for continuing to support work in this area.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Any other comments, councillors? No? Then I'll put it to the board. All those in favour? Unanimously carried. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Okay, we're now moving on to item thirteen point two, which is another notice of motion, industrial and hazardous waste. Councillor Tarkos.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put a a motion, I would like to forward a motion, um. Would you like me to read out the motion as per papers?
Uh, as per papers is fine.
Okay. Uh, that council write to the Victorian Minister for Energy, Environment and Climate Change, the honorary. Honorary Lily Dumbozio P M P, the Chief Executive Officer of the Environment Protection Authority Victoria, Dr Kathy Wilkinson and the Chief. Executive Officer of WorkSafe, Victoria Claire Amies, to A. Formerly thanked the state government for extending the officer for protection at the local environment programme until the thirty first of July two thousand nineteen. B, draw attention to the challenges faced by local government to manage, prevent and mitigate the risks. Associated with industrial and hazardous waste sector. C, request additional resources for council by making the officer for protection of the local environment programme permanent. And D, advocate the state government to take a zero tolerance approach to industrial and hazardous waste. Sector throughout the work of the Resource Recovery Facilities Audit Task Force, EPA and WorkSafe. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Do we have a second for this motion, councillors? Councillor Trung? Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, the illegal dumping and storage of industrial hazardous waste, including combustible waste and chemicals poses a significant risk. To human health, the community and the environment, and more action is required to address this problem. Following the Coolaroo fires of two, in July two thousand and seventeen. The Victorian Government established the Resource Recovery Facilities Audit Task Force, led by the EPA to identify. And ordered recycling facilities deemed to pose significant risk and more than four hundred inspections have been undertaken to date. However, rogue operators still exist and have continued to undertake illegal storage of industrial and hazardous waste. In our community, as has been exposed to dangerous and toxic fires as the one we are all aware of in Tottenham. Council has played a crucial role in responding to and enforcing. The illegal storage of industrial hazardous waste to ensure our community environment are protected from dangerous practices. Including fires and contamination of the environment. However, we cannot tackle this issue on our own. Despite council's best efforts to take a hard line approach to prevent the risk of fire and harm to the community and environment. The challenges faced are often complex and resource intensive. The lack of enforcement powers available and penalties make it difficult for council to act swiftly and impose. Stronger penalties. The management of this issue requires the continued commitment of the government, a government-led uh response. To improve collaboration between all agencies, improve, impose stronger penalties and close any loopholes. That allow these operators to continue to go undetected. All agencies include the EPA, uh, WorkSafe and council must take a zero tolerance approach to the industrial. Hazardous waste sector and send a strong message to any person or industry that will not tolerate these illegal practices. Madam Mayor, it is, has been proven that mitigation and prevention is uh far, has a bigger impact. Than cleaning up the mess after these horrifying fires that impact our community. That's why we need more than a twelve month commitment of the OPAL officers. We need proper resourcing from federal, state. And local to work together um and to make a commitment um with the funds available in the Sustainability. Fund which are there for the purpose of um supporting measures like this, that it becomes a permanent feature in Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Would the second like to speak to the motion, councillor Trung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first I would like to thank you to councillor Tacko for all the research. And sharing up the attention to all of us about this important issue for the community. We should take this further to the state government and even the federal government for the safety and. For benefit for our community. So I fully support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trung. Councillor, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Councillor Headitch?
Another great notice of motion, Madam Mayor. Uh, councillor Tarkos uh has raised what is one of the most serious issues in our community. Uh, we as a city, Brimbank, and the Western Region have over the decades. Uh, been contaminated heavily by industry and also um been affected by what can only be described as weak. And ineffective legislation. In recent times, we've witnessed the Tottenham fire, we've witnessed uh. Stories of all this storage that's going on inside factories in the Epping area. Who knows what's around the rest of the western suburbs and northern suburbs, but there will be others. And for us, uh, we need to be vigilant. Uh, we have, uh, I guess lots of legacy sites where there has been contamination. Uh, that we are constantly monitoring and it makes us nervous. But we also need the powers and the resources and the ability to be able to deal with some of this in a progressive way over time. We can't fix. The sins of the past up quickly, but we can uh start by doing some proactive and positive things to. To bring these things to to attention and then to account. Uh, for me, I think it's absolutely imperative the OPAL officer is made permanent in this city. Every council in the Western Region should have one. Uh, it's it's such an issue uh we face with contamination. Every time we open up a site, it's asbestos, it's contaminated groundwater soil and so on. Uh, we have to mitigate all of that, I I know, but we do have a lot of legacy problems that we face as a council. That no one seems to care too much about at the state and federal levels. We do need support for this. As we said earlier, we have a budget that's under stress. We have a a million different things we need to do to to lift our community up to levels that others experience. And we have a, an underlying risk with all of this. So I support fully what councillor Tarkos is putting to us tonight. I also support fully any further work that council can do through either Lead West or various other bodies. To strengthen the legislation. We need to bring these rogues to account who do this on a regular basis. They need to be de-licensed. They should not be able to operate companies. Their trucks, their their assets should all be taken from them and. And put into consolidated, the assets put into consolidated revenue. They should be stripped of any powers at all and sent to jail for some of the really big issues that go on in this community.
Councillor Headitch, do you need more time?
That'll do. Commend this, commend this notice of motion to the council.
Thank you. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? We'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Uh, councillor Tarkos, you have another notice of motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put a motion that council writes to the Chair of Parks Victoria Board, Mr Jeff Floyd. To request that Parks Victoria Board hold a future board meeting at Brimbank Park, including an opportunity to meet with the Brimbank Mayor. And councillors to discuss opportunities for Brimbank Park, Horseshoe Bean Farm and Organ Pipes National Park. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor, councillor Allen. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Brimbank is strategically situated in the heart of the West, Melbourne's fastest growing region. Which is undergoing significant transformation. The Melbourne Airport rail link with a stop at Sunshine and other key rail projects. Will transform Sunshine and the whole of Brimbank and cement the region's position as the CBD or the heart of the West. This is a hugely exciting and transformational time for the West. The investment in transport has the potential to deliver enormous benefits. To our local community and beyond with jobs and so much more. Yet Brimbank still faces many challenges, including poor health and wellbeing outcomes in sections of our community. Creating healthy places and greener spaces that will support Brimbank's diverse and growing population is crucial. To improving Brimbank's livability and health and wellbeing in our community. Madam Mayor, there are uh some concerns that have been raised about these parks, including the lack of uh access via public transport. Um, there's also an overall lack of resourcing, um, there's been issues with rabbit infestation. Uh, and also lack of activation, which we need a lot more programming, a lot that encourages passive and active recreation. We do have certain health challenges and these parks would be an ideal place to activate such. Programs like a thousand steps or other programs that we can, that are free and. that are free and accessible to our community. Council itself, our council has been committed to transforming the public realm over the last ten years through the implementation of creating better parks policy and the plan. By June this year, council will have upgraded over a hundred and five parks and spent nearly thirty-two million dollars on parks. Council's park network is now one of the best and, um, uh, in Melbourne and the community love the choices of destinations from small to local parks to council key flagship parks, but they can be better. Council is also investing in creating quality green streets for people in our activity centres and greening our suburban streets to ensure Brimbank is a livable municipality for years to come. This opportunity presents, uh, for our council and for Brimbank, uh, the, um, Parks Victoria Board to meet and work closely together for better outcomes, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Would the second I'd like to speak, councillor Allen?
Um, yeah, just to follow on from councillor Tarkos. It's very important that we have these conversations with Parks Victoria. Uh, we feel that there's a lot of issues relating to the organ pipes, to Brimbank Park that they just seem to fall on deaf ears and I also feel that if we're able to talk with the board directly, then hopefully some of those messages can finally come through and it's not just a request, they can put a face to these issues that we've been speaking about for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak, councillor Pham?
Um, working through our portfolio and, um, committee, uh, that related to Brimbank, uh, proud, uh, vibrant Brimbank and also the, uh, tourism, uh, side of the committee. I think this is what, this park are what we want to showcase to people who will come to Brimbank, this is what we brought up, will we need support? Because at the moment, they're not much into it, they know public transport, as we say, um, no such program or such clear direction of what's in it in the future. I remember back my trip to USA and, um, in every national park they have the stamp for that park with their passport, so every single park that you go to, you get the stamp. And my hope in the future is to have Brimbank passport where every single park of us, we have a li- little stamp that say, you know, we're proud of our park, we're proud of our destination and, you know, come to Brimbank to visit.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Pham. Councillors, is anyone else that would like to speak for or against this motion, councillor Headitch?
Thank you, madam mayor, uh, another great notice of motion, we're getting good at these. Um, again, uh, Parks Victoria uh, and all the, the three parks that councillor Tarkos has identified here, um, Brimbank Park, the, uh, Horseshoe Bend Farm and Organ Pipes National Park are all great parks that sit in the Merribong Valley. We have, uh, an opportunity to turn this valley into something special as we plan and develop over the next few years and we think about, uh, master plans and so on for the future. That will only come about though if there's vision, if there's commitment from partners and there's an ability to, uh, work together and to shape up a plan to turn this into a, 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 a natural experience, a natural environment experience for people who live here, for people who come and visit here and particularly tourists now who will come via the airports uh, into Sunshine and beyond to experience what will be a transformed place. Uh, wouldn't it be great to have a transformed valley with it? That people could wander down from Kieler, from North Sunshine to Kieler right through to Organ Pipe, so it'd be fantastic because there is so much beauty and so much history, so much indigenous history, so much of our, our local history with the Gold Rush and so on, um, it would be great. But for me, the, uh, the biggest issue of all is, as councillor Tarkos has been saying, parks in Victoria have a, have a, have a motto, healthy parks, healthy people. Uh, we've heard many times here through the growing Brimbank work and that, that our people aren't very healthy at the moment. We need to, uh, lift health status in this community. Healthy parks is one way of doing it, we know that Brimbank Park has been under-invested in badly over time. We know that there's been a lot of resources going to the eastern suburbs when the elections come, where the marginal seats are. We know that the, the priority is not here, uh, we ha- we know that from talking to people both in the industry and beyond. But we also know that there's huge opportunity here to turn Brimbank Park, Horseshoe Bend Farm and the, uh, the Organ Pipe, Sidnum Park and the Organ, Organ Pipes National Park into something special. Uh, we have, uh, the possibility of federal programs and all that coming forward, so we need to organize. Getting the board out is a, is a masterstroke. Show them, show them directly what we have here in this particular community at the moment. Show them the underinvestment, show them the opportunity and let's get some runs on the board with the board. Uh, we need to show them around all the parks that we've developed as a council. We've done our bit, we've done a huge amount of work and thanks to the offices and the programs they've put together and the policies they've put together. But we need to have, uh, Parks Victoria and the state government step up, they're more than willing to take sixty million bucks out of this community every year in POKE's revenue. We don't see it coming back. And we ha- we, we see lots of money come out of this community in various forms, we don't see it coming back. Here's opportunities to do things of great benefit to the community going forward. Good on you councillor Tarkos, great motion, uh, let's get the board out, let's have a really positive constructive, um, conversation with the board about what we need in this particular community along the Merribong Valley, what they can do for us at Brimbank Park, Horseshoe Bend and so on, thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch, councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this motion? No? Okay, I'll put it straight to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, so that is the end of our notices of motion tonight, so we move on to item number fourteen, which is rescission motions and there are no rescission motions this evening. We'll move on to item number fifteen, urgent business and the CEO has advised that there is no or there are no items of urgent business this evening. So now we move on to item number sixteen, which is confidential business. There are three items of confidential business listed in tonight's agenda. Uh, may I have a mover of a motion to close the meeting to members of the public for considerations of items number sixteen point one, sixteen point two and sixteen point three, which have all been designated as confidential. Is there a mover of the motion, councillor Pham? Can I have a, sorry, would you like to move the motion?
I'd like to move the motion at the confidential.
Thank you. Um, I assume that means as printed in the business papers. May I have a second for that motion, councillor Judicare? And I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you. Carried, so this meeting is now closed to members of the public at eight fifty-seven PM, thank you. Thank you so much for your patience. Council has now considered the confidential items and resolved that they may remain confidential at this stage. So that is the end of our meeting this evening, I'd like to thank everyone for attending and for your interest in tonight's meeting and I declare this meeting closed at nine oh seven PM, thank you.